Any discussion? Questions?
I'm staying.
Any correspondence? Let's put the topic public comment. This is the time where the public gets to voice concerns and praises and... Yes, sir.
My name's Burr Hughes. I just learned today that I was on the agenda last month, last meeting, and obviously I missed it. So I wish to apologize to the town clerk and town council for taking up your time and being a no-show. And I'll make sure it doesn't happen again.
Okay, council reports. Adam.
No activity. Couple of calls to respond to.
Yeah, we have a dog problem out there by the hospital between two neighbors that got pretty heated. So both Ernie and I were out there at the same time trying to calm that down. Hopefully, a fence went up between them and all sorts of good things. So hopefully that's taken care of. We haven't heard from them for a while.
Parks.
Morning is being done in the parks and the sprinkler system was outdated.
The sprinklers, yeah. Wasn't good news because we needed some sprinklers. So I've been ordering them to Mountain Supply for 20 years. Called them up and they said they don't make those anymore.
You're talking about the heads?
Yeah. All the, the whole thing. You can't even buy the, it used to, to buy the whole thing is 250 bucks. And then you can buy the insides for 220 and just the top for a hundred and some. They don't make any of that anymore. And the guy said, "Well, I'm gonna search my archives." And so he was gonna search all over and see if they could find any. And they can't find any at all. They quit making the valves a long time ago. When they put those valves in, they were offset. So you came in at one level and went out. But now when they go bad, they don't make offset manning. So you get, now you gotta, to make them fit, you gotta dig back almost 20 feet to be able to pull that pipe up to get it in there straight. So we've had to do that a few times. But I haven't had too many of them go bad. But the sprinklers are 30 some years old. And so we're gonna start budgeting to replace with the newest and greatest thing that they have. I think they're actually quite, quite a bit cheaper. They're 93, but they're not these indoor. These were cast iron pots and they're really strong and last a long time. According to these guys, Rainbird does not make any of that anymore. So we're up against another.
If it's a Rainbird system, isn't there a universal head that will go on that?
No. No.
Because I know I've replaced ones at my house, you know?
Yeah, there are certain Rainbirds. These are, these are not your normal sprinkler heads. These are, they're, they're industrial. Cast iron, big brown cast iron like these with these big interiors. They pop up, but not like any pop-up. But they're, they're just not made anymore.
Are we gonna get through the year?
Oh, yes. Yeah, we're still out there bending them. You can bend them as long as you're careful because they, they wear out. And when they hit, they don't cause it to move anymore. But if you bend it a little bit, then it gets it. So we bent, we bent one and broke it. So we had to go find another part, put it in there. We'll get through, but we'll just start buying some as we need them. And gonna have to change it over to whatever's the latest and greatest.
Won't be the piping, but just the heads.
Just the heads, yeah. It's along the same lines as a lot of our sewer stuff. When we had that wa, the water problem, we make, haven't made that stuff forever. So we had to go to a whole new system.
Has there been any progress on the battery cages?
Nobody's talked to me since the meeting.
Since the meeting?
Crime report.
City Superior for the, let's see, the 14 that were cleared, 14 offenses and traffic stops secured. Six arrests citations for a total of 20. For incidences for the city of Superior, there were 17 that were cleared and four that were unfounded for a total of 21. Traffic stops for City of Superior. We had three warnings, two that were, let's see, arrested citations for a total of five. And do you want the...
Sure.
For the actual cases, there's one stop sign violation, seven omnibus hearings, two orders to show cause, and three initial appearances.
I can... Just in time. Cool.
Oh, yeah. Hi, everyone. Sorry about the late. The pool is running, several startup problems are dealt with.
Typical. When it sits for 50 weeks, it only runs for 10. You run it, and those are only a year old heaters and neither one of them would start. So there's what they call a thermal pile in there. So when you get the pilot light, that's gotta heat up enough to keep the pilot light going. And then it's gotta heat up enough to send the signals to the little computer box. And they wouldn't. So you had to replace both those. They're 50 to 80 bucks a piece. So that's a way of starting on that. And then the electric water heater, no propane water heater, had the exact same. It's only a year old. Had the exact same thing, had to put a thermal pile in it. It wouldn't work. That one hit bad, that was 20 bucks. We got the pump in just fine. And so we thought, okay, this cures all our problems, but it doesn't. It, it pumps better, but it still treat, creates a whole lot of air. So we've got, have to burp that thing all the time. Otherwise it starts cavitating in there. And then they, it puts out like low pressure. So the boilers are going, we don't have enough flow and they'll shut off and they won't go. So I've been, it's not unusual. The pool is a babysitting job. It's been since I've had it. Every night we go down there, my wife and I walk down there after it closes and burp it. We get it set back up and then it'll run through the evening. And then when we get there in the morning, we have to do the same thing. And then once before we go home. But other than that...
And how many years has that been?
15?
Yeah, 21.
21. Well, thanks for taking care of the pool for 21 years.
It hasn't been too bad. A few lifeguard issues, but she's doing good, so.
Yeah, and I think that's been tough.
Yeah. Oh, well. When I was vacuuming the pool one, I don't know, a few weeks ago, you go back and forth like this. And I thought I saw something and I don't think, maybe I'm seeing things. But then the water smoothed out. There's a crackdown in the deep end that I've never s, or didn't know shallow and I've never seen before. Then I moved down 10 feet and was going and there was another one down there. So I didn't know if I was seeing things. So I had Rodney come and say, "You see anything that we haven't seen?" And he'd look around and he says, "Ooh, yeah, there's a crack there and a crack there." So they just showed up this year. Now, it may not be much anyway. It could just be cement. But we've been leaking water under that thing for as long as I've been there. So maybe that underneath has finally moved away enough that it's starting to settle and move. Don't know. It's just one of them things that'll be what it'll be.
We'll find out.
Yeah. Could last another 20 years. Could be gone tomorrow.
It's still kicking, which blows me away sometimes.
And the pool committee meets tomorrow? They lost one member?
We did lose one member. So we do have a spot. And I've been trying to recruit people. So I think I have a couple of people who are probably gonna wanna be on that committee. Sewer. All checks and maintenance being done. All testing has been completed. Violation letter responded to.
The, to go with it, like she just asked what kind of checks and sampling. So some of you that aren't aware, with the sewer, you have to check that. Once a week, you have to go down, take an effluent sample. And then you have to send that into the lagoon. And it's gotta be taken every two hours. So you have to composite, you take it at 6:30, 8:30, 10:30, 12:30. And you're supposed to mix it up by volume of flow. So you gotta keep track of your volume of flow that's coming there. Our town is so consistent that I still take it every two hours. But the flow is like 17, 18, 19, 17, 20. So it's not enough to really be divvying up to say. And I told her, when the inspector was here, I told her that. She was like, "Yeah, you don't have enough difference." Big cities could go way up and then way down. So their load is different through the time. So we do that and everything. And then every month, you have to do an influent and effluent of testing. And that's the same thing, every two hours, we're gonna send it into the state. You get that back every week, every month. And then you have to fill these forms out. Well, the violation letter I got was these forms are, they send you a year in a packet. And each month has four forms that you have to do. And evidently, I think it was their fault. Because I looked at all the things, because you pick those, it says June. So it's 6, 6, 6, 6, and there's four. Every quarter, there's five because you have to do oil and grease every quarter. And so I pick up all of six and filled it all out and didn't, just didn't pay attention and sent it off. And then they said, "You missed the page." So I went back, looked at the one, I always make a copy, date when I send it off. And then I, sure enough, that page wasn't in there. So I just had to get online. And it was testing. They said, "Did you do the testing?" That's the main thing they wanted. If I just forgot a form, that's not a big deal. If I skipped the testing, then they'd be a little mad. But I, the testing was there, so I gave them a copy of the testing. Plus filled out a form. I got offline, sent it off to them, and I haven't heard from them. That's not the first.
Water. All checks and maintenance being done. All testing has been done. Water leak at Wells Fargo fixed.
Yeah. Same thing with the testing. We have to check that. I think I've mentioned it before, but not everybody where. Chlorine has to, wells have to be checked every day of the year. That's why we go out on weekends and do that. And then you have to check it. On the weekends, we check our own houses. But otherwise, you have to alternate through town to get a chlorine residual and keep that residual up to at least point two. And that form has to be filled out every month. And then you have to take bacteria tests once a month and rotate them through town. And those are in little bottles. And you gotta chlorinate it and go into the various houses or businesses. We try to set them up. And that's gotta be sent out. And then you do that on a quarterly basis and send that out. So that's what I mean when it checks and, checks are being done. The maintenance is the same thing. The chlorine pumps, we're checking the wells, same thing that goes around. The water leak, I went to, my wife and I went to Wells Fargo to clean on the night. And I see water running down. And I look up there and, "Oh, there must be water up there at the motel." No, it's coming up out of this ground right there in front of there. It was that old two-inch pipe. And it, I did, so that was Monday night. So I went home after we cleaned and called Duane Reynolds and hoped that he would be free. And he had just happened to be free. And then called all the emergency people that night and got it set up for the next day. And we ended up digging about a 25-foot ditch, following the line up to find good pipe. Kinda like what happened down below in front of Cessna where we never did find good pipe and we had to run all new. We did find good enough pipe to splice in a 21-foot piece. But what was odd is that as we're going up, we run into a sewer box that they must've put in years ago for the old Legion Hall and motel and some other things. And it was like a splitter box where they all went to this and then hit it down to Flatcrick. Well, we fixed the leak, turned on the water, and water started coming out of these pipes. Well, that's not, this is sewer. It's not supposed to be doing that. And they're flashing, "Did you see where it's coming from?" So we had to keep digging past it. And here we found is the old line that went into Legion Hall, came up and went that way. And it was shut off at the curb stop that they had there. But it was leaking by because when I cut it, it was full of pressure. So what was happening, it was still making it through and going into that lot. And then when it turned on, it came back down and found the sewer pipe and started flowing down through there. So we fixed that also. Now, there used to be Castle's Market there. And so there could be another line deadheaded in there. But we didn't go that far down with our ditch. We started further up. That line is gonna be a problem at some point. Because it didn't look good. We had to go 21 feet before we found enough. We could clean up and have the clamp on, put this piece in, and then bury it as fast as we could. Yeah. Hope that I couldn't come the next day and it was seeping up. You wouldn't have to replace that line, but you'd have to dig across that street for everybody there. There's a new main that we put in a few years ago that they could, that'd have to be a contractor to come in and do that. We couldn't do it. That's why I have to call Duane. We got a little backhoe, but it won't dig a 25-foot ditch six feet deep. It'll dig a little hole. And we did that one week with it and it was fine. So that, to have that fixed and that part alleviated, we probably have to do a bid and get a contractor to come in and hook up the bank. The old Chevrolet station, the bar, Napa, and the people in the back. The house and the motel, one of the motel parts, the motel, the back fourplex hooks onto that old rotten line. So it'd be a pretty good project. So it's, it's something we'll think about and go from there.
Streets.
Oh, some alley worth being turned.
That's about it. We haven't done much, we don't do much on the streets. So we've taken a few scoops to fill in some potholes in the alley when people ask.
Fire. Fire department monthly report. Three emergency calls, two training meetings. Fire, firefighter one training, SCBA grant stipend, building issues, ISO rating impacts, recruiting and retention.
Yep, we have, have confirmation. We have our grant for new SCBAs. The grant is, I think the exact number, I think is $98,200 in grant dollars. And their match is a little over 5,000. What I'm hearing right now is that it's not clear exactly where those numbers are coming in. We're certainly going to get them from the sounds of things, everything we want for that number or less. I've got one of the manufacturers reps coming in on Wednesday to demo some stuff. And we'll develop a set of specifications and go out to bid for them or not, depending on where the numbers come in. But it'll be a much upgraded pack. We'll be able to carry more air with the same or lower weight amount. And they, one of the really nice features with the new packs, the new standards have is they have basically what they call a heads-up display. A lot of times you can't see much once you're in a pack in a smoky environment and the face masks fog up. And being able to see your gauge and how much air you have is pretty tough. The newest packs have what they call a heads-up display. And it's actually inside your mask on LEDs that'll tell you your remaining air supplies. So that's real nice. Being able to have the guys carry more air with less weight will be a real upgrade for us as well. And we were gonna have to do something. The packs we have, the carbon fiber bottles on them can't be recertified again. So we were gonna have to buy bottles anyway. This'll solve the whole problem and do most of it with grant money, so.
But how, but how many units are you...
Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna, this'll be 12 units and possibly two RIT packs, which is everything we carry on the two structure trucks. And it's everything we'll ever need. And that would be 12 SCBAs with additional 12 spare bottles. They're a higher pressure unit. The compressor we bought with, ran a few years back, will handle the higher pressure. We made sure we were set up for that when we did that, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I forgot one thing on streets. It wasn't part of it, so. We have some trees that are in the city right-of-way. In front of Debbie and Bill Terrell, where I'm on a Tim Hayes. And a branch dropped out of one. And so I went and measured, and they're definitely within the city right-of-way. The one tree of concern is pretty bad and probably should be taken out. Their concern is, I told them, well, city tree and city right-of-way, we normally just take them all out. But that would also include Mr. Reed's trees.
Boy, are you getting an evil look right there.
They're all in the same line. Now, they're a little different than what Spanglers were. Spanglers were huge trees. And seven, eight of the 13 were rotten and need to come out. But they were right on the road edge. These trees are at least set off six feet. But they're still within that right-of-way of the town. So I don't know that I'd have a problem with leaving them because they looked good. I'm not an arborist by any means. This one, there's a big hole right in the fork. You can stick your hand down in there two feet. So it's, it's getting rotten in there. And the big chunks heading towards their house. And then the other one's leaning over the street pretty bad. So it's up to you guys. But I'm thinking we could probably get away with taking that one out and not destroying all their... It's their southern exposure. They'd all be sunbaked, even in Montana.
Yeah, but that, that limb that broke off, I drove by there going to my house. And two minutes later, I came back down the street and here's the one laying there. But the part that was alive on that limb was just a little tiny, you know, maybe a half moon section down there at the very bottom.
Yeah, there wasn't much.
And the rest of them was dead. Like I said, there's, there's a big hole. You stand in the street and there's a big hole there.
Yeah.
It makes you wonder about the health of the rest of that tree and the rest of those trees there.
The other trees, they don't have any of those wounds like that. And I looked at them all and they don't, they don't look bad. Because you can tell, this one is, it's, needs to come down.
Oh, so your suggestion is just take the one down and then...
Yeah, for, for now. Yeah, if it, if they were all, if they were all right out on the pavement edge, like Spangler's streets were, I'd say we need to take them all out. That's just too big of a liability. But they're, they're off six feet. So that gives you enough room to eat a gas to get off the road. But they are within the city right-of-way by a foot or two.
Well, I think we want to keep the town green as, as we can in order to keep people happy too and make the town presentable. So, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, take down the dead one. If later on, we look like we have problems with the other ones, then we'll go for them. But for just right now, we'll just take the one down.
We have a local guy that's way cheaper than bringing the guy out of Missoula as long as Leroy's available. And he does a good job, very careful. He charged, when the tree we had take down by the Timberman Park, they're from Gun Bolts. I think he charged us 800 and I was 1,500 from the guys in Missoula. So he can, he can do it.
Did that person that came through a few months ago doing that tree survey in town, did they do, did they do any kind of assessment of the health of the trees at the same time?
Just city trees. But I don't think they were aware of those. You know, they'd have to know the width of the...
Right away.
Right-of-way to be able to tell that they were on city. So not those. At least I didn't see them in that report.
Just that, just to...
Yeah.
Do you wanna make a motion or do you wanna just do it?
Do we need a motion? I'll make it. I'll second it. Just cut that one tree.
Yeah.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Saved your trees too. Money, Roger.
Now he's finally going. Council concerns. Council concerns. Unfinished business, EPA developments. Yes, that would be you.
I have not been able to accomplish getting a renewed assistance grant from the EPA. I'm overextended right now. I also was forced into a new request system for the funding. It's called ASAP. It's Anything But ASAP. It's a lot of other acronyms, but not that. And I haven't been able to craft the code with Candace and I for about two months. We've been fighting with it, trying to get it figured out. But it's, all of your payment requests are electronic now. They're not, we used to be able to fax them. So I'm three months out. I don't know if I'm ever gonna get that thing resolved. We play phone tag with EPA quite a bit. You get shuffled around to different service centers. So hopefully it can accomplish that. Hopefully that the EPA will take action on that, that new grant and we can have some movement there. We think that there was 11 properties that were skipped in the testing process. It appears that we've done enough footwork and legwork and running things down, except maybe for one place up Flatcrick that Duke is thoroughly intimidated because he got the royal phone treatment today. He was rather excited about the process. But we're gonna see if we can get those picked up. And they would be here even next week to try to get that testing done. Should be about a day, a day and a half to get that, those processed. So I'm understanding that they have all the releases except for one. And that should really put us at a very, very top high rate of the parcels that have been tested in town. So that'll be a good positive. He's a little concerned that if they find waste, he has a little money left over. But he's hoping, I guess we're really strongly hoping that there's no waste on those properties because he could quickly go through that money. And if we are not able to remediate them with what's left from this last year's remediation, which they always keep some in reserve for trying to do some work and do that. We'll see what's just gonna transpire on that part of it, so. Other outstanding issue of trying to get the Orneleus Place reconstructed that all of a sudden started having major water problems once the yard next door was remediated. So kind of an interesting development. But hopefully we can get that resolved next week too.
Town and county interlocal agreement.
Just not moving on that. Your local contract food sanitarian is probably, I just got my retirement manual and the paper in the mail the other day. It's called a 350-page food code that is gonna go into effect this year. It is a bear. And so if you're smart, and I am totally resistant and usually not smart, but I will be headed to billings tomorrow for three days of FDA training to try to figure out how to utilize this new code that's gonna get stuck on all of the food purveyors in the county. So including those in the town of Superior. Good luck, fine, have fun. Won't even be a manual product that you can give to them. I, I really barked at them the other day on a conference call and said, "I at least want discs for the people out here so we can plug it into a computer." But if there's any real notable changes, that all food establishments will have to have a certified food person on them. So it's gonna be interesting. So those type of things have been put in the local agreement, so. I'll try to get back to it, but it's still gonna be there.
Court interlocal agreement, fiscal year 1415. Ms. James. Is that it, do you?
You have questions? I presented you with some materials, so I will field your questions.
What they're asking for is a $1,500 increase. Their caseload has gone up about 25%. And last year's agreement was 4,800. This year, they're asking for 6,300. And the 4,800, this billing place...
Yeah, I went through and did a chronological sort of thing.
Three or four years at that, at that cost.
Yeah, in 2008 and '09, we started out with 10,000. And then 2009, '10, it was 6518. And for the last three years, it's been 4,800.
I'm looking for how much can be increased? 15,000. Instead of 4,800, it'll be 6,300.
So you, most of the premium...
Yes.
Okay, I'll so move it.
Any discussion?
This increase is what, that's about 25% they paid.
Yes.
Which is probably about what I take, you know, cost of materials and stuff that's going up.
Well, the breakdown on it sort of is the clerk time. I gave you a clerk's job description. We supply all the office supplies. We do all the employee costs. We have computers that are networked, so we do all of it. So, yeah, it's everything.
It's an imposition too, isn't it?
No. We've been doing it for years and it really is a sweet deal. But the, the best part of it is the access for our clients. We used to have, we used to have city court on Tuesday afternoons from 1 to 5. And now, you know, if someone was in jail, I would see them. But now they have access, you know, five days a week, 8 to 5. They can pay, they can call, they can go online and pay. They can fax. It's more accessibility also. It's, it's a good, good thing. And it's indicative of what many small jurisdictions do in Montana. That way, they don't have to have a separate office for the, the court clerk for town and court clerk for Alberton and...
It includes the training too, which I was saying.
Yeah, the training, everything.
We split the cost, the cost of the training with the county. And that's involved in this.
And the fines go into the city proper?
Yes.
Aye.
Question.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Flood plane study project.
Hey, my other little time consuming thing. Spint had a very interesting conversation with FEMA Region Eight Supreme Commander today. She's very concerned that Superior does not have a current set of floodplain regulations. There seems to be something out there that maybe I'm not totally aware of, but they do not want to adopt a new LOMAR without current floodplain regulations. Um, so a couple of things, I need to know whether you need a formal notice from me that we need to adopt new floodplain regulations and start developing them and get it on the agenda so that you can hear it, so that we can, um, have the hearing, have the timing, do that part of it. Um, your old floodplain ordinance is, I don't know, twenty some pages, your new one will be about fifty five pages. There is gonna be about fifteen places that are gonna be more stringent than anything that you've seen before. You have to decide on those and, and put those in there, so. There is a floodplain conference in Helena next week and, uh, FEMA from Denver said, that'd be a really good idea to go to that, which I was already planning to do, but, uh, anyway, the DNRC people and the FEMA people plan to meet with me during that conference so we can slug it out, uh, what they're gonna do, what I'm gonna do. Try to get going on that, so. The other part of it is that there's a contractor for FEMA for the floodplain study. They said, you need to generate all these letters to the affected parties. I generated all the letters, I put all the right announcements in there, and then they come back and they said, that's nice, but that's not the right format, or not the, not format. It's that now instead of a hundred and twenty day open hearing process for those affected by the new LOMAR over there, it's gonna go to six months because of some reason, and I don't know if it's the date of the floodplain regulations or what's going on with it, but anyway, we're gonna have a six month comment period over this LOMAR instead of a hundred and twenty days. Partly because of the old regulations, I know that, but in that same six month window, we need, you know, the town needs to adopt new floodplain regulations. So my second question is, would the town be mindful of having a floodplain regulations that's for Mineral County and the town of Superior? Or do you want your separate own set of regulations?
The town has already been subdivisioned.
Subdivisions combined, the growth policies combined.
So when we move annex anything, it moves seamlessly out into the.
And it's just, if, if you, if you annex, it'll go from county floodplain regulations to Superior floodplain regulations, but if you in essence, make them one and the same. It's not that you couldn't have your own special things in there or anything like that, but, uh, I just, I, I looked at the model regs today and, you know, there's a few things in there, but, um, my preference would be to try to, since I need to adopt regulations for the county and we've been waiting for these final model regulations, is just to do both of them together. Uh, unless this LOMAR complicates that, but I, that's what I'll find out next week. The county has four new LOMARS that need to be incorporated in their regulations, so. We'll see how that fits in there, so we'll try to put that all together next week. So then the next two steps in the adoption of the Flat Creek Flood Study is that we need to put the notices in the paper and get those notices out there. And I don't think it's at the first notice, but at the second notice, then the, the timing starts for the comment period and in some places, those have been really controversial, but I, I just wouldn't anticipate that here too much, but we gotta keep the process going now and doing that, and so, um, it's, I appreciate that respect and still said that if, if we need help over here, they're willing to help us, but see how that goes, so. We'll just have to keep it moving and keep it going and stuff, but, uh, in, in essence, if we if, 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 if this very Joe Brady calls the person reviewing the LOMAR file and tells her that she's satisfied with what I gave her for answers today, then the LOMAR basically should be issued. And we will have completed the process for the LOMAR. So that's kind of where we are.
Is it something that we need to make a motion and vote on now, or?
I, you know, I, I think it's something that you just need to, to contemplate some like, I mean, if somebody some night wakes up in the middle of the night and says, we don't wanna have combined rigs, then so be it, but I, I, I like I said, I will check and check with a couple of people and see if there's, if there's a disadvantage for one way or the other or some reason, or, you know, legal issues or something else like that, uh. I, I get a little bit concerned about that because obviously county attorney's gonna do the county things, but the town attorney's gonna do town issues, so. I'll, I'll try to figure that out for the, the next meeting, but have something more for you.
New business, Mineral County Fair Board request.
I guess that's me.
It's you?
My name's Al Ratchison, and I was appointed to the fair board this year and first thing they do, they did to me was appoint me to the parking problem.
They like you.
Anyway, it's the Mineral County Pioneer Council Public Transportation Service has offered to run a bus from the fairgrounds to different places in town. And we thought it might be a good, uh, idea to have a drop off pickup at Timberman Park. Not only for people who are, who park there, but they will pick up anybody that walks to that area. And I don't know if you have a copy, but we have, uh, that Mullen Trail Bank will pick up, uh, Superior Cardinal Collar Center, uh, Montana Bar Parking Lot and Epic Island Elementary School. And hopefully we will get people that leave their cars at home and just walk to these pickup places and, uh, we pick up right from there. So we need your approval that you use the Timberman Mortar Park Parking Lot as a drop off pickup place and parking place. And second thing on was the, uh, problem with, I believe it was Booth and Church last year.
Yeah.
That they, uh, the only thing I can see why anybody wanna park a horse trailer down that alley, I don't know. It's not wide enough really. And so if we could, uh, request, if we could put up or if the city would put up, but a sign, no horse trailer parking in alleyway or something like that. To keep the, uh, horse trailers out of that.
You're talking the alley between?
Yeah, the.
Fifth and sixth.
Yeah, the alley between fifth and sixth.
You think the sheriff's department could have done that? I mean, there shouldn't be parking in there anyway.
Right.
There's no place to park.
No, I, I drove through there and looked at it and it, to park a trailer, a horse trailer, it was ridiculous anyway. So. But what they did last year, Al, somebody took down the barricades in Church Head, right across the yard. Yeah, that's what I.
Yeah, there, there really ain't much you can do there. We've been fighting that at the parks from the get go. We put just a rope up there and they ignored it. We put that snow fence up there and they cut it and go through, and still have horses in there, so it's just, it's an ongoing battle.
Yeah, I don't think you can close the alleyway off because residents use it.
And they had a lot of residents using it to fire.
And my concern with parking cars down here at the ball field, Al, is, you know, that's cars parked along the street all the time when they're playing ball down there. You know, and, but I would not wanna see cars moving out beyond, say, you know, the concession stand, bathroom building there. Any, you know, encroaching out into the park any further than that.
Right.
Getting out on the grass, getting out onto a playing field with cars and then you know, we're partying out there and throwing garbage everywhere.
I, I, I don't think that we made that, that many cars parked down, honestly.
Well, yeah, but I'd like to see our park protected.
Yeah, I, I agree with you.
Somebody lives searching, is there somebody volunteer group to go down there and just kind of monitor parking?
Right down the street, do it on the street.
I know, it is tricky, I get all those softball players and everybody else. They're fun. Sure, the soccer crowd's gonna be just as funny. And that's just coming weekend too.
I know. When I, in my yard last time, just like asleep.
Yeah, I, I don't anticipate the fair will have anywhere near, not even close, the number of cars at the ball. Team.
Yeah, yeah.
As long as they stay on that grass, that's pretty much the parking area, we should be okay.
I'd really like to see you allow the fair board, just even if your sister broke, but some sort of, just a little barricade there.
Okay.
So that folks don't, you know, the responsible ones won't go any further than that.
I think it's a great idea though. I think it's a really good idea to start having that bus to the fair. Makes a lot of sense. It'll also help keep, you know, people who are doing good and diving and everything else from doing that when they should. So I think it's a great idea.
And like we figured, we, we may get two, three hundred, we may get fifty. At least we gotta start and see if it works.
There's one other thing too, if you consider it, uh, the safety of the cars down there when people aren't there, so you don't have hoodlums from in town or from out of town going down there, you know, checking their windows and locking windows out and stealing stuff.
I haven't approached the sheriff yet, but I plan on.
Yeah, he's gonna be pretty shorthanded.
Let's see if he could maybe run around down there once in a while.
Yeah.
I know he comes out on special occasions, on weekends he comes out himself. That's why I'm sure it's just.
Well, I'll make a motion that when the fair board uses a parking school one year, and we'll see how it goes from there.
My second thought, Tom.
In the alley.
Yeah, we're all into trouble. I, I, I make a motion to let them put up no parking zones on the alley.
I don't know if I have any, I'll look to see if we have any. I used to have some, I think I ticked some down from the fire department. Maybe I still got, I got them. I'll look, my pile is just darned, we'll stick them down there.
You just get a bunch of fake video cameras and put them around.
Yeah.
Like deterrence. Can I see the video?
Mm-hmm.
They're being watched.
The old ones, the old giant ones.
Oh, just the sign, you're being watched, yeah.
I told, I told Shirley we should just put a pack of dogs in the middle of the park. Keep them away.
Keep the horses out.
Okay. Any more discussion? Question?
Like I said, I just like. Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
No, no, um, do you, do you wanna say something else?
Yeah, I just like say about, put some kind of barricade or something across there.
Yeah.
Just to keep the cars, there, there's the limits, don't go beyond that. That's what I had to say.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, complaints River Ridge and Greens at Cedar Creek subdivision ponds and walking trail. Mr. Mashburn, subject email, not senior. Captain, anyone who wants to say one? Thanks for the line. On the mosquitoes issue and that, I asked Tim, and Tim can address that as what any possibility is or how difficult it is. Um, I did contact Tom Moore, the community decay org, this is in the packet. Our community decay org is pretty much is limited towards piling things, not making them.
On section two of that, that community decay thing, it is offensive to the census. Well, if it smells that bad, I don't know why, you know, this ordinance can't stand up. This is the second time, I know this year that there's been complaints, am I right? About the smell and, and, uh, the decay and stuff there, um, I mean, I think the town needs to seriously think about helping these people somehow, um.
I did send a letter to Ken Corr, I don't know which one of the Holland back boys to send it to, um, and sent them a letter of this, this community decay org that's at this time. Because I didn't know what else the council was instructing me to do or have Tom Moore look at, because there is another little comment in that number, section number D.
Number D, number D county decay org. Community.
Yeah.
But I don't know if that's considered normal. I mean, that's above and beyond a normal lawn or a normal, you know, ponds and walking trails. To me is kind of.
And the weeds have, and we've sent weed letters out to everybody.
Right. I thought.
Oh, that's the last people we. They grew well.
And let me ask you this, people here, some up there, um, it, is it, it's interfering with your enjoyment of your own property?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, see, and that's where I think they stand, they have a stand on this, I mean, uh, obviously the ordinance says, you know, it's obstructing their free use of the property, so.
And they're comfortable enjoying their life.
Yeah.
And if you've got.
I mean, I don't blame them one bit. I, I'd be complaining to high heaven.
It's a, it's a community ISO, if you drive around out there a little bit, look at those ponds, uh, last fall, they, uh, pulled a lot of the cattails out of the ponds, stacked them up, left them there all winter, of course, they were snow covered part of the time. Then they made some attempts, uh, during a rainy Sunday to burn them. And you can imagine the smoke that we had to put up with, and that happened to be Mother's Day weekend, uh, I believe, and then the following, two weeks later, they come out and, and burn again, and we had a lot of smoke from trying to burn the cattails. And you can still see the residual piles out there, some of them are partially burnt. It, it's an ISO, and, and if they really wanted to sell their lots, I'd think they'd have a concern. But there's something that apparently they have no interest in selling their lots anymore. There are probably a lot of noxious weeds, uh, well, there are a lot of noxious weeds growing out there, maybe Tim can address that. Ridding the area of noxious weeds.
The only ordinance that the town has is regarding the height of weeds.
Okay.
As it required.
How about county and, how about county and state reference, noxious weeds?
Um, the county does no jurisdiction in the town limits.
How about the state?
I don't know if the state's.
I think the state would have something to do with noxious weeds, uh, if they wanted to put the pressure on the town.
We're not the state though, we can't.
What about the state?
We don't enforce state laws.
Pardon?
We, the town can't enforce state laws though. I don't know who you would go to for those, but you can, or unless possibly on public reasons or that, you might be able to file a complaint with the state and you don't have to probably sign.
In, individual landlords can make complaints about weeds. And typically those are always taken by your, uh, county weed district doing that part. Would they recognize in town or out of town? I don't, I don't know if that would make a lot of difference to them, I, if it's, if it's a violation of the standard for controlling your weeds and controlling noxious weeds, I'm certain they'll take the, take the complaint, uh. The, from my experience in talking to at least Dave Brink, they, unless the subdivision was reviewed under the more current regulations, which at least half of this is not, they, they wouldn't be, they, they just would not feel any obligation to try to do something about the weeds. The River Ridge, though, it, it had a weed plan and they were, uh, in agreement that they were gonna control those, so that's something we should look at and see if that weed plan for River Ridge was filed, because that would obligate them to take care of that. And typically, the weed district will send them a reminder letter that you made that commitment, so. That could, that could maybe take care of part of it.
Portions of, of River Ridge, uh, have been mowed and portions of River Ridge have not been mowed yet this year.
We've sent out the letters just in this last week.
But portions of it were mowed earlier this year, and they completely disregarded other parts of it.
But we've sent out letters in this past week.
I hear.
To the, all the property owners, to lot owners and to, because some of them are lot owners, some of them are also just the developer section, so.
River Ridge along Fourth Avenue, specifically is what I, I guess. Which is all owned by the developer, I believe. River Ridge along Fourth Avenue, specifically, is what I, which is all owned by the developer, I believe.
So who actually owns it?
Uh, it's quite a mixture, quite a mixture. That's the, on the developer's side. And it was Ed and Ken, but since Ed died, there's.
I'm sorry, six kids.
Six kids on, on the ends that'll be working down.
How does our legal counsel feel about this? I mean, it's hard.
The only thing he said was that, that, you know, in most instances, the community decay ordinance is used to get them to do something. I was hoping that by sending the first letter and telling the council that and reviewed it and decided where they wanna go with it, that, um, towards the basement or whatever, that if they have a copy of the ordinance, they will, they will move forward with it. I did not put a deadline in there because I did not, was not instructed to give them a deadline, but I gave them the chance to at least be informed of what the legal, the law is.
And really, so if we send them another letter, then we give them thirty days according to our ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Well, this letter went out July tenth, it went written July tenth.
Right.
So we have thirty days from July tenth for them to respond, right?
I'd like to see if they actually respond to this letter.
Yeah, and they haven't yet.
Yeah, but as I said, it's gonna be four days.
Right. Four days.
While we take this next month, let's see what they do.
And I'm, sorry, I'd like to also have our, you know, just our attorney a little bit, because I'm looking at this, and, you know, public nuisance, which affects the same time an entire community or a neighborhood or any considerable number of purposes or persons, although they extend, you know, annoyance or damage may be unequal, and, you know, nuisance means anything which is in just to, you know, indecent or offensive to the senses. So it's interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property or which unlawfully instructs to free passage or use in a customary manner, any bay stream, public park square, I would assume that it could build a walking trail. I mean, I, yeah, so I, and when, you know, you look at the normal residents, I think that, I mean, to me, that would mean a single family residence, not a development or.
If, if I may say something else, please. A lot of people use that walking trail out there. A lot of people come out there and walk. We welcome them out there. So it's not only us that utilize that area. We have a lot of walkers, we have a lot of mothers, young mothers pushing strollers, uh, young children. So it's, it's used by a lot of people in the east end of town, if you will, please.
What I can do is, I will send it forward.
Well, even number one, accumulate means to store, gather, collect, keep or pile up. If you're piling up cattails, I don't know who got the idea you're gonna burn cattails. I mean, you, you just, they just don't burn.
I've seen them try to burn standing cat, cattails out there with propane torches.
So. Um, and and this has been a, you know, it seems to me a long enough problem, and the developers haven't, you know, it's just been hesitate, hesitate, do nothing, do nothing, do nothing. And we are complicit with that. I mean, if we don't do something, as the, the city commission, we're going to be guilty, we're, we're gonna be responsible for that, too, and you can have, you can be angry with us as well as with the developers. I don't wash my hands, hey, be honest.
And on the mosquito issue, we do have mosquitoes down there. I've been down there for ten years and we never had them at first, not a single one. Now we go out on the deck, front porch, we start getting bit, we have to go in.
Well, and Tim, you can address the mosquito issue, because that's a tough issue that we don't have any ordinances for, for bugs. We don't have any ordinance for bugs.
In order to have any outside assistance or not, homeowner or something, the, the area, the group would have to form a mosquito district, so, because the liability, liability issues get really intense real quick about somebody gonna spray. You'd have to hire a, a applicator, licensed pesticide applicator, that would be certified to spray the pesticides in the ponds out there. Yeah, I thought that they were gonna have fish in a number of the ponds, so it's counterintuitive to me, because if you spray the ponds with mosquitoes, you're gonna kill the fish, so.
The large pond in the lower section is receiving water, and the water is just standing, and it's been there, uh, all spring. And it's, it doesn't move, I mean, it's, it stands still, and, uh, I went to Murdoch's and I bought packages of those rings, and I went over there and I treated it myself. But obviously, uh, it hasn't worked, and I'm, I'm done spending my money, uh, for somebody else's property.
There's no fish in those ponds?
No.
The lower ponds aren't a developed pond, that's just accumulated water.
Yes, it is. But I, does it have a, uh, liner in it at all, or is it just dirt?
Just dirt.
Cause there is water.
Groundwater coming up.
No, uh, no, there is water this year, first time I've seen it in four years that I've been there, there is water this year flowing from the pumping system for the upper level ponds, flowing all the way down to that lower level pond. Whoever probably activated the pumps this year was not aware of how it had been done in the past, but there's water flowing, uh, under Osprey Drive. West of Rasmussen's house, and then it flows all the way down through a rock, uh, French drainage, if you will, all the way that goes into that pond down below.
Well, if it flows down there, does it have, it doesn't have an outlet?
No, has no outlet down there.
It's supposed to be a certain.
Well, there would be an outlet probably if it got high enough, but it will not get high enough because of normal evaporation.
What was, uh, when the development was put in, what was the rules on the development?
Well, maybe you can go back to even the golf course, perhaps, maybe you can go back to that one.
I think they're going off over twenty years now. Well, I understand it's been going on for twenty years, but I think it's time that we try to do something about this. It's not the first time.
They had the ponds as hazards, but they weren't a recirculating system.
Right.
Once they got rid of the, uh, golf course, then they did a lot of work. They supposedly put a couple hundred grand into these things, lined them, brought in rocks and stuff down, and therefore future fish. Now, they never got there. The economy went to hell and they didn't sell anything. They, like he said, they run that pump off and on, who knows?
Because the economy went to hell, does that keep them from finishing what their, their roles of the development was? I mean, just because the economy goes bad doesn't mean that you're obligated to quit thinking about what the roles of the development was.
We've looked at those rules two different times, though, I think it's time to pull them back out and look at them again. There's a lot of them. Tim, can you pull this back down to the closet, dust them off for us, the rules of the development down there? The rules for the development when all of that was created and the different iterations that have happened, can you bring those out and dust them off for us?
Sure.
Am I opening up a very large box of worms again?
Well, the, the, the first thing that's gonna be real obvious is that you had a proposal for a subdivision that was within the county to be turned over and annexed by the town. Unfortunately, the subdivision regulations that were in place at that time were less than spiffy, how's that? They, they did not even do a very good job of saying that, oh, hey, by the way, Town Superior, you're gonna have a subdivision that we're expecting you to annex, and therefore, there should be a sign off, not only from the county commissioners, but there should be a sign off from the, the.
Residents?
Council. Because, uh, you know, there was an expectation about, uh, providing water and sewer, which only could have been accomplished by a, uh, extension for an annexation of those areas to, to obtain that water and sewer. When the county commissioners reviewed that, the, you know, the selling point, the open space, the, the absence of even having park fees, park and lieu, uh, any of that, was, was basically accepted by having the open space, the mini golf course, the ponds and all of that. So to me, I, I, I see a little bit of a, uh, inconsistency in saying, you guys gotta go do something when it was basically an approval to say, we want you to have all those features down there as part of the subdivision, have that open space, have those ponds, because they're on the plans, they're, they're right there. I, I guess, being said that, I don't know if that clarifies a lot, but there's, there's difficulties in saying that, first of all, you had an old set of regulations that's not gonna sit there, and, and they basically dictated this set of covenants for that subdivision that are really so totally one-sided that, uh, nobody saw, had enough foresight to say that, you know, in a number of years, these, these covenants are really gonna create us some problems. But those covenants are a problem from the standpoint that just almost any subdivision would have a set of the covenants that the homeowners would be contributing to some, uh, funding mechanism, and then they would take that funding and maintain portions of that. If, if you had open space now in the subdivision regulations that would come in, it would be the responsibility of the homeowners association. Unfortunately, the, the control factor of these covenants had to be set, or they wanted them such as that there's this lopsided, uh, thing that once a majority of the lots are sold, that you don't even exert some control. It's when, I believe, seventy-five percent of the lots are sold. I think they're getting fairly close to that, and that would be something that should be looked at, is that when the non-superior golf group LLC is not in that position so that they can still affect controls of that. Then the homeowners are gonna have to come together and put something together, amend their regulations, do something that's gonna benefit themselves, and, and, uh, that's, that's, and I, and I speak about that because of obviously all of the, some of the past activities and, and, and the litigation that went on there, because it, it, you know, it, it was needed to be proved whether those covenants were pretty much ironclad, and yeah, they were, so they, they purposely did that. So that, and that, right now, is gonna be a negative, it's gonna be unfortunate on there. Personally, I think that somebody from ownership and those people right now wanna step up. I've heard personally that they really wanna market the lots, they wanna do that. If, if that's the case, I think that the situation would be down there is that let's try to reestablish something with the, uh, current ownership of the lots, the current management of the shop, as far as the homeowners are down there, and try to start something new and say, hey, we need to, we need to get in here and try to address something, so. Like, like, as pointed out, one individual going down there and spending a lot of money isn't, that's never keen, but if you get the group. You, you take care of that, and by default, by default, the Town of Superior accepted that.
Right. And we've had this discussion about the homeowners association, and I think that's the one that keeps coming up, it keeps coming back to it, so it's not, I don't think it's a case of the town not wanting to do something at this point in time. In some ways, we're kinda impotent to do something, and I, and I'm wondering if it does go back where we need to sit down. They are looking at trying to sell, I mean, from what I understand, maybe this is the time to get back at the table, I don't know, all of us, including members of the town, and homeowners and the developers, and say, like, we all gotta figure this out, because it's not benefiting anybody at this point in time, none of us.
I think in, uh, two thousand six, two thousand seven, uh, all the property owners got together, and, uh, we, uh, we voted down the homeowners association, and we put it away. Uh, and to bring that back, I don't think is, uh.
It's, it's still there.
That was done before the, before the town council, was it not?
No, you, you, you can't remove that without governing body approval, huh?
Uh, no, just the homeowners down there voted no, they do not want a homeowners association, period.
Was that before, was that?
There has not been one.
Was that at a town council?
No, there, there, there is, there is one. There's a homeowners association, there's a set of covenants, they haven't been undone, they still apply.
There is no HOA covering that entire.
No, there, there is.
No, sir, I've read the covenants, sir. I've read the covenants.
There, there is a homeowners association, it's just controlled by the, the superior golf group.
By the developers? So the homeowners association, there is one, but it's controlled by the developers?
It says, I believe, that until there's a seventy-five percent of the lots have been sold, that they retain control.
Before I ever purchased out there, I, I had requested, I presented what I was told was a, a covenant on that land, because I did not wanna get into an HOA, having. Coming out, coming out of a state like Florida with lots of HOAs and condominium associations, I know what they are. And I saw no provisions for an HOA in the covenants that were presented to me. When you read the plat maps of this development, it very explicitly states in the plat, that's up to a certain point. On a homeowner's property, they're responsible for their piece of property. But when you approach those ponds, the homeowner could not change those banks for nothing, so I contend that the, the developers have a responsibility, or the Town Superior has a responsibility, based upon the plat maps and the covenants is to the property.
The development is still.
And if you haven't read them, I suggest you read it, please.
Oh, yeah, me too.
If you need to refresh your memory.
No, I think we're interpreting them a little bit differently, because it is the covenants that govern, and they really have written them to be the developers, in the developers' favor, and it is, I mean, it's still their property. Technically, we don't have the authority, I mean, except for these decay ordinances. To go in and do anything, and, you know, not having a homeowners association, and this is just as far as business, not that I don't want to help you guys and get this cleaned out, but as far as not having a homeowners association, it doesn't then put the onus onto the town to expend our resources to clean it up either. We wanna help, but I think it has to be some kind of a, a working progress for all of us to be able to do this, I mean, and I think that's kind of where we're stuck, is that the developer can then say, well, I don't want to because I don't have to.
Well, if you take it over, obviously, the developer's gonna walk away from it, and that's not our point for the, for the.
I don't, I don't think so.
Our point is, is within the, the town, you all have a responsibility to communicate with the developer, and they, let's clean it up. Like I said earlier, in this, way back, I don't think they have any interest in selling lots out there. If they did, they would make it more presentable. I, I think they have no desire to sell any more lots. They'd love to, but, uh, they have no incentive to improve the area to make people even wanna buy the lot.
And then I have a question for, uh, Mr. Planning here. Uh, all those lots down on, uh, Greens and Cedar Creek were sold. They were sold when we had this meeting of all property owners, and all property owners voted no HOA, period.
Did you record that at the clerk and recorder?
I don't know, the attorneys, yeah, the attorneys were there, I don't know if they did or not.
If it's not. If it's not a recorded document at the clerk and recorder, it's.
Okay, I'll look into that.
Has, has to be recorded.
Okay.
Well, I think what we need to do is get them out, I, we need to dust these off again, I mean, it's been years, I think we do, and let's start looking at them again. We've never seen them, I'm sure, Richard's never seen them, Shirley's never seen them, let's start there. I mean, this is a long process, no matter what, they have thirty days to respond, then we have forty-five days of hearing, I mean, it's not going away in the next month, so we, we have time to start looking into this and figuring out a solution.
It, it is my understanding, but I have never seen the documents on this either, that there is, there is a four-unit building out there that they call a condominium. I might call it a four-plex. I understand, but I've never seen the documentation that there is a condominium association there, but that would be a, a separate parcel of land, separate from the rest of this. It'd be governed different, because if it is a condominium, it would come under the condominium laws of the state of Montana, have nothing to do with the rest of that area out there.
And knowing a couple of people that have lived there, they do, they do pay maintenance fees and get their maintenance all done and stuff, so.
And I think that's, I, I think that's where we are right now. I mean, I think we just have.
Table it after getting on.
Yeah, and getting them.
Cause I like to set a copy of the covenants and.
Right. And in thirty days, we'll know by next time if they've responded. And in thirty days, we'll know by next time if they've responded to our letter too, so that'll be my.
Good, thank you.
Thank you guys for coming in and discussing it.
And I'm not the guy who initiated the email to the city, so.
I was gonna say, you know, I.
I'm not Wayne Cashman.
And forgive me, but I would like to get all of your names. Can you guys save them for me so I can write them down and make sure they're correct? What is your name?
My first name's Douglas. My last name is Pritchett, P R I T C H E T T.
And I'm assuming you're his law actually wife?
Well.
Kind of.
Kind of. And my name is Marilyn Moran.
Emma Ryan?
Yeah.
First name is Burr, B U R R. Yes.
Gotcha.
That could be bad.
No, I, I just, I don't think we've like met a whole lot, but I've seen your name and try to remember things.
It's like, kind of like Tim said, it's neither here nor there because you don't know what's going to happen. But Jeff Hollenbach is this old eldest son, he's not, he's a go getter.
Right.
So if he can, his problem, I think, is going to be pushing up the skid pool.
And if I may, if I may say something in that respect, to my knowledge, I don't know how a box like you all know, but I don't recognize most of them. But when I was involved in buying property here four years ago, Jim Hollenbach was operating out of Phoenix, Arizona area. And to my knowledge, he's still operating out of Phoenix, Arizona area.
Yeah, he doesn't own any of it.
But he's the one that wrote the letter to the town board in January.
Yep.
He must be part of the LLC.
No, he's a nephew of that. And so he was kind of trying to push, get the city to try to get in on that.
And what was your name right there?
That's our newest office assistant, Ruth Gordon.
Oh, hi Ruth. Your name is Ruth too.
Yes.
What are you, you guys are trying to confuse me? See, that's not Ruth. Well, welcome Ruth.
Thank you.
Ethan, further on this?
We're tabling it till next time. It's fine.
Any sort of legal?
Uh, no, none of those.
Court business.
Great, there's a couple things, you do not have financial reports, the books for June are not closed and don't have to close until tomorrow. So that I can finish up for the rest of the whole school year. And then we're looking out there discussing fixed assets software, so I can finish that, I can balance that out, finish it. Tom Orr contacted me regarding the Metcalf property and we did abatement on that house that was arson house. And I put the lien on the property, that house is going into foreclosure on the twentieth. And once it happens, once that, Tom says, once it happens, the property that is foreclosed and sold, all junior leads, liens, which is the town's lien, are extinguished or in favor, in favor of the most senior lien, typically the mortgage. If the town wants the, the property, you can bid on it at foreclosure sale, but the senior lien holder, most likely the bank, would have to agree to whatever bid the city might make. If there is not, is not much owed on the property, it might be worth for the city to make a bid. Also, sometimes banks just want to get rid of the properties off their books. So it's something the council wants to consider before October.
And it's October as when it's foreclosure?
October twentieth is when it's sold. Yeah.
And that is the lien.
That was repressed.
That's how we used to, to use the ordinance.
That's, yeah, that's.
Turn right, address here is in the back.
Right.
On the left inside.
Yeah.
Yeah, the south end of Pine Street.
Yeah. So that's for that time. I don't know, I'm not sure with bank, the last time I talked to the title company, there was like four of them in there. So you don't know if they've got it down to one yet or not.
What do you call the lien?
Ours is sixty-four fifty. I'm not sure what they would come up with for, for that property.
Yeah, that's the main question, is the property even want to buy it or they just give it on the bill?
Sell the property and recover?
Well, you always hope that you can shovel property for more than what you live or whatever.
Well, I, you know, nowadays it just is.
Well, yeah. You, you know, how long do you want property? It's not like property moving.
Dying of a road, yeah.
It might be just moving.
Let it go, I would say right now, because at least no kids will injure, you know, because they were going in the basement.
Okay, I need a motion for the consent agenda.
I think a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Any discussion? Discussion? I. I need a motion for adjournment.
Second.
I want to go play the Indian discussion.
Are you towards to a. Are you going to play to a.
Hi.
When your hair's standing there, that's like.
Trying to run, oh yeah, you're right there, you got you. I love lightning.
When we doing this year, we were, see that stuff up there on the wall, that's what we were doing last year. Yep, it was fourteenth, it's a day fired up. Well, the other thing last year, this time we want to call a day.
I have a big, once it hit ninety, the oven is off. It's like, because I don't have air conditioning in the house. The last ones I make, I send to Tricon.
I already see her.